America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We'll do a roll call here to determine the quorum. Counselor Baumgartner, here, Ebers is absent. Ferguson?
Here.
Howard?
Here.
I am here. We do have a quorum. We'll call it meeting to order here. Um, first off, we'll shut down the regular, uh, meeting portion of our meeting. And enter into the public forum process. This is the time where we invite members of the public to address counsel. When you address counsel, we ask that you state your name for the meeting record. Speaking time will be limited to three minutes. Um, if, uh, if more discovery needs be done after those three minutes, we'll be happy to work, uh, with the individual after the meeting to find and resolve the issue. Uh, so if anybody here is from, anybody from the, the public is here to address counsel, now's the time. There's nobody physically in here. So if there's anybody online, doesn't look like anybody's coming forward there, so we'll close down the public forum portion of the meeting, reopen the regular meeting here, uh, with the setting of the agenda. We've had the agenda for some days now. Um, if anybody has anything in the consent agenda, they want to move to discussion items, now would be a good time to request that. Otherwise, I'll call for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So. Second.
Motion's been made by Ferguson, seconded by Baumgartner to approve the agenda as written. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And none opposed. Agenda set as written, we'll move down to the consent agenda. It includes regular meeting minutes of June 2nd. The first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh six. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash five one. Uh, get some brief descriptions in here. Okay, twenty twenty-five dash oh six is an amendment to the city code to repeal and replace sections one fifty-two, five hundred through one fifty-two, five twenty-seven about the, uh, regional airport zoning district. Resolution fifty-one is calling for a public hearing for the proposed ordinance um, for that same issue. Resolution fifty-two is accepting a donation from FM Bank with the partnership of the Federal Home Loan Bank of Des Moines for community development. Uh, that was a grant issued to the EDA for a sum of
Twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand dollars. So we, uh,
Very exciting.
We definitely thank our community partners there at FM Bank for filling out that grant application on behalf of the EDA. Resolution fifty-three is authorizing summary and uh, title and summary publication of ordinance dash oh five. Resolution fifty-four is a step movement for Riley Minkle. Resolution fifty-five is authorizing employment at Elliott Lang as temporary part-time community center assistant. Resolution fifty-six is declaring a part-time police officer position eligible for police and fire plan coverage. We've got a Marcus Construction PCCO and a Marcus Construction Pay Application. Call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Same.
Second.
Motion's been made by Baumgartner, seconded by Ferguson to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Yes. The minutes from June 2nd.
Okay.
Um, after public forum, instead Mayor Hawkinson suspended the regular meeting and opened the public forum. Um, that should have been Deputy Mayor.
Correct. That definitely did not happen. Call, call for a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda with the adjusted minutes.
Same.
Does that satisfy you?
Yep.
Second.
Motion's been made by Baumgartner, seconded by Ferguson to approve the consent agenda with the adjusted minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda passes as amended. We'll move down to discussion items here. Um, we're, we're moving into this, uh, conversation about airport zoning. So we're gonna, um,
The public hearing actually, Mayor, sorry, uh, is about the planning commission amendment.
Oh.
So ordinance, uh, for the airport zoning, we have later on for D with the comprehensive.
Got it. Pardon me. All right. So, um, right now, we're going to move into the public forum for the public hearing, uh, process for ordinance five, amending chapter one fifty-two regarding the planning commission. So now we'll, uh, receive some staff reports.
Yeah, so, um, this amendment intended to amend sections one fifty-two point two nine zero zero through one fifty-two point two nine three of chapter one fifty-two in regard to our planning commission establishment. Um, this was introduced last meeting, June 2nd, along with the accompanying memo for council, so I'm just gonna kind of hit on the high points. Um, it changes the membership and voting, so from six appointed voting members plus one appointed city council member with full voting rights to five appointed voting members and one non-voting council liaison. The commission terms now end on December thirty-first of the last year of their appointment. Um, and does state that members of the commission shall be residents of the city. It adds section that addresses attendance and vacancies, so if there is, um, any council-appointed member fails to attend either three consecutive regular meetings or twenty-five percent of the meetings held in the calendar year, the council may by majority vote declare that member seat vacant. Um, it changes the meeting section to be less specific, so it was in city code that they had to meet on the second Monday at seven PM, which doesn't give the commission a lot of flexibility with their membership to look at it every year and say, does this time still work? Do we want to adjust the time? Other commissions are afforded that flexibility, so we just have that they should meet monthly if they have business to review. Um, it updates the record section, um, just talks about the meeting minutes that need to be required. It better defines and updates the powers and duties of the planning commission, and it updates the definition of the planning commission to be consistent throughout city code. We had some definitions of the planning mission that were different in different sections of the code, and we felt like the definition should be the same consistently throughout. So those are kind of the highlights of this, um, planning mission, has discussed this, has looked at it, and recommends these changes to be adopted.
Okay, alright, is anybody from the public here to comment on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five? Not seeing any movement out there, so we can close the public hearing, uh, portion of of this hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
I do have a question on that one, uh, while we're still here. The, the changing of their, that are giving them the flexibility for their movement. I would encourage the wording to keep these meetings in the evening. There are a lot of, I'm learning that there are different meetings that happen
Sure.
during the day, and not everybody from the public has the flexibility
Yeah.
of a eleven A and M meeting to be able to be a part of. So to keep the transparency and keep the availability of these meetings for the public, I think it's fair that they be
Yeah, and I think so, the current planning mission shares that view, their availability is evening, and we certainly try as a city to either host evening meetings or over the noon time lunch hour, which I know not everybody has the flexibility to do, I do recognize that, which is why we do offer different times for different commission meetings to try and fit in. Um, so our residents have the option that maybe some can work during the noon time hour, but evening is hard due to childcare reasons, or sometimes they can't come during the day, but they have an evening commission that they could be a part of, so we do try to offer that flexibility for our residents.
Good point. Alright. So now I'll call for a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh five, the amending of chapter one fifty-two regarding the planning commission.
So moved. Sir.
Motion's been made by Howard, seconded by Baumgartner to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh five, it's an amendment, it's chapter one fifty-two. Uh, any further discussion?
Mayor and council, if I might interrupt, hi, this is Makai, I'm online. Um, it's just unclear to me if the motion is making, uh, is approving these changes with the proposed language change to keep the evening language within, within that particular section of the proposed change under meetings. Um, so if we could just get clarification on, on the finality of that particular point.
Amendment you wanted to offer, or just encourage?
I would just to encourage that, to say, so that the, the availability is more for a majority of the community.
But not making that decision for the planning commission, right? Just suggesting it, but that's not
Encouraging, yeah.
Yeah. So. Yeah, I, I think a majority of, I mean, in my opinion, I, I feel that a majority of our meetings should be held when the majority of the community is out of work in the afternoon, and the, the meetings that are held during the day are very difficult for people to be involved with if they're at a, at a regular job, so that works.
If I might suggest, if we're gonna change what was sent to us from the committee, I'd like to send it back. If, if, if it's going to be affected that it has to stay in the evenings and not let the committee itself decide, then I don't, I don't.
I need some clarification. That's not what's, what's happening here. Uh, Mr. Howard was just suggesting that it would be best for the planning commission to consider doing evening meetings as a courtesy of the public. He is not, um, requesting that the amendment be changed.
So just.
So leave it as is.
Leave it as is.
Just with that note that when they're looking, I mean, we'll make this comment for every, every annual year, the commissions who have the option to look at if they want to change their annual meeting time. So this is something that can come up every year, and we can encourage them to say, you know, think about your membership, if you're trying to attract more people to your commission, does the evening time make more sense for your membership and for your recruitment efforts, and we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
So thank you, Makai, for that distinction, but it sounds like we are voting on the ordinance amendment as stands.
Thank you.
Alright. I believe it was moved by Baumgartner, seconded by
Uh, I seconded it.
It was moved by Howard.
Moved by.
Motion made by Howard, seconded by Baumgartner. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, ordinance oh five is approved and amended. We're gonna slide into Bonnie's audit presentation. Bonnie, uh, thank you for uh, joining us today. Bonnie's from ABDO. They, uh, do our, our external, you know, third-party audits to make sure that we are following accounting best practices during the organization, and and Bonnie, uh, is, is involved in and organizing that information and conducting the audit, and she's here to present uh, any findings from the audit, so thank you very much, Bonnie.
Okay, great. Yes, thank you so much, Mayor and Council for having me. Is it okay if I go ahead and share my screen and I'll pull up the audit presentation and, um, that's in your packet and we can walk through that?
Yes.
Okay, let me do that here. Alright. And I'm gonna be on, uh, page, starting on page forty-eight of your packet, uh, going over the audit presentation. Now, this is a, a summarized overview of our much more detailed and comprehensive audit report. I'll focus on this, and if you have any questions.
I'm gonna just pause you. They don't have the presentation printed separately, so she is starting on the title page.
Oh, perfect. Okay, that sounds great.
There was a little bit of confusion when you said page forty-eight.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, no, I'm not going to. Nearly that many pages of information, so, okay. Thank you so much. Alright, um, yeah, so if you have questions while I'm going through this, please feel free to stop me, and we can touch on anything as it comes up. As it was stated, this is, you know, an overview of the twenty twenty-four financial statement results. I'm gonna first touch on our audit results, so starting on page three of the, of the presentation there. And then I'll go into some of the financial information. So we have issued three different opinion letters within your financial statements, and and just to summarize them, uh, very briefly, the first one is our independent auditor's report. It's really at the front of your financial statements, it's required by state statute. It's also required by your bondholders, it's, it's what, um, users look at to know were these financial statements, uh, properly reported, and was an, an independent opinion expressed on them. And we issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, and really what you're looking for. We also review internal controls, I'll talk about some internal control, um, findings that come up during the audit every year, we'll touch on those on the next slide. And, but nothing out of the ordinary as far as internal control issues or processes that were not being followed. We also review compliance with Minnesota state statutes, so we issue a separate independent letter over Minnesota state statutes and compliance, and no issues there, so we look at things like how are you paying your bills? And bidding projects, um, documenting and, and running council meetings, things like that, so no issues there, that's really great to see that all those different state statutes are being complied with. And then because of the different federal programs that the city was involved with during the last couple of years, we also completed a single audit over your federal spending. And so we issued an opinion over your compliance with uniform guidance and how you spent funds over some of the different federal programs that you're involved with, and we didn't note any issues there either. So we do have two, uh, findings in the report, but these are not new, these are not something that, um, have just popped up this year, these are, this is something we talk about every year, and we'll continue to talk about, um, in the years to come, as with a, um, within your finance department, uh, you don't have as robust of a finance department as you would have in a, um, a perfect world, and so some of your finance financial processes are subject to a little bit more risk. Uh, because of that, you have just a few people doing the things that ideally, in the perfect situation, you would have a team of, you know, ten people doing, or something like that, so you have a limited segregation of duties finding there, which is an internal control finding within your report. And something to be aware of as you review bills and talk about project funding and look at financial reporting, keeping in mind that, you know, there is this finding that exists within your control structure. We also have a finding for preparation of financial statements, again, nothing new here, uh, but really says that as your auditor, we prepare your financial statements, but they are a very important part of, of the financial processes that happen within the city. And they need to be, um, taken seriously as such, so because you have that third party do that, we do have a finding in, in there. And this is again, a very common finding for a city of this size, we probably see, uh, these two findings pop up in at least, um, you know, sixty to seventy percent of the cities that we work with. Those are the two findings for twenty twenty-four, similar to what you experienced in twenty twenty-three. Uh, next, I'm gonna talk a little bit about your financial trends, starting with the general fund. So the general fund is the main operating fund of the city, and, and the city does have a policy to try to maintain forty percent of your next year's budget. So the last couple of years, your, your general fund went down a little bit, and you can see there that for this year, it stayed relatively consistent with where you were last year. So twenty-three to twenty-four, not much of a swing as far as your reserve balance, you were about, at about thirty percent. A couple of big, um, fluctuations that happened in twenty twenty-four compared to what you had budgeted. So every year, um, at the beginning of the year, you set a budget where you think you're gonna be, and this is how you ended up twenty twenty-four compared to budget, so revenues were about a hundred and ninety thousand over, and its spending was about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars over. So there was some additional grant revenue that was brought into the general fund that offset some, some of that additional spending, also interest earnings and some other, uh, categories were over budget there. And then you can see your fund balance increased about forty, forty-three thousand. Looking at some historical trends, here you can see the different types of revenue that's brought into the general fund. So taxes and grants, including local government aid, uh, being your largest, um, source of revenue for the general fund. Uh, taxes, there was that increase there that you can see in the tax levy, uh, compared to what you had from, from past years. And then looking at the other side, the spending by program, you can see how this has fluctuated. And so within public safety, there was, uh, an increase in, um, wages and, and some other, um, general costs there as well. This does not specifically include, include any capital costs, this is more just looking at the operation side. And then I wanna show just a brief summary of some of the other funds that you have, some of the smaller resources available that are committed for different, um, purposes, and so you have these things called special revenue funds. So this is a list of your special revenue funds, you can see what you have some reserves set aside for here. And then you also have some capital project funds where you set aside reserves for different equipment purchases, street projects, things like that, whenever you bond for a large project, it goes into one of these capital project funds, you can see there. Uh, at the end of twenty twenty-four, talking about December twenty twenty-four, you had about two point two million remaining from a bond that was issued, um, for that, the city hall and the public safety building. Your capital revolving fund did decrease a little bit due to spending down some reserves for, um, equipment purchases. And then a quick look at your debt service, and this chart is a little bit skewed this year because you have that, uh, temporary bond, the twenty twenty-four B that's expected to be repaid no later than twenty twenty-six, so that kind of spikes that maturity schedule. Uh, but you can see that otherwise it looks pretty, um, pretty straight across with an equal amount of maturity over the next ten years excluding that bond. I'm gonna talk a little bit about some of your other funds here, your utility funds, starting with the, um, the, with the liquor store. And so for the liquor store, we like to focus on the cost of goods sold and how much, uh, gross profit are we bringing in there? And so, um, if you look at it across all three years presented, fairly even operations from a gross profit percentage, uh, right in that twenty-five percent, down a little bit from last year, but not too much, and there was a slight decrease in your, um, reserve balance. And then the wastewater fund, so your wastewater fund should support itself, and so you wanna make sure here that the operating receipts coming in are covering your debt payments and your operating costs. And also thinking about what are some of those future debt payments and capital, um, replacements that we're gonna need. So the operating receipts have been really close, you can see in the top chart, to where the, the debt payments and the operating costs have been, and so not a lot of overlap there. But the cash did increase to, in twenty twenty-four due to some reimbursement this year for past capital outlay, and so the cash balance did go back up a little bit with that reimbursement. And then the electric fund, you can see here the, um, operating receipts over your operating costs, you have that, that nice gap there that, that lets you um, use the electric fund to support some other operations as well as build up cash for some capital. And then we have the water fund, a similar picture here is what we were talking about with the wastewater fund, where the operating receipts and then the cost and the debt payments of the cash going out, um, has been really close, if not just slightly more than the receipts coming in. So that's something that you'll wanna watch and make sure that those rates are set at the appropriate level to cover those debt payments, uh, operating needs, and then also future capital. And then we have the storm sewer fund, and so you can see here that the receipts have been sufficient here to support those operating and the debt payments, there's not quite as much in operating um, costs here that's needed on a day-to-day basis, so a little bit easier for the storm sewer fund to build up some reserves for future capital. And then the utility reserve fund just brings in a very small fee to help build up some cash balances. And then separate from all of that, uh, you have your EDA, so this, this table just breaks out some of the different EDA balances that were audited, and you can see there how these different things are accounted for. In total, you, you do have about thirteen million in cash, and that includes a lot of different things that we've talked about, includes unspent bond proceeds, and things for your utili- utility funds, you can see that the enterprise funds in this green color, that's the bulk of your cash balance, and so really dedicated for those utility operations and, and capital, uh, replacement needs. And then you can see you have the capital funds, which is a mix of, um, assigned for capital purchases and also bond funds. I'm gonna show you just a couple of, a couple more charts that have some, uh, ratios on them with some comparisons to both cities within Renville County, and then also class four cities. So class four cities are cities up to ten thousand in population. Um, and we get this information from the Office of the State Auditor, and we average it out, and just to give a little bit of a comparison to other cities of a similar size and also cities within your region, and so you can see here, um, what your statistics are per tax rate, and then also taxes per capita compared to class four cities and also cities in Renville County. And whenever I show people these charts, I always like to just offer a quick disclaimer that all cities are very different, and your needs and the taxes that are needed to support services, different operations, capital debt are so different than even the cities around you, and the cities that are in that population size, so, so keep that in mind when you're looking through this. And then we also have a debt per capita information here, so you can see the debt per capita, so this debt per capita is, um, is a little bit goofy this year because it includes those temporary bonds, and so those bonds are gonna be, you know, refunded or replaced with some of that grant borrowing that's gonna happen or already has happened, and so, uh, just keep that in mind when you're looking, um, here that per capita is, shows a really wide swing, but some of your, um, debt that's been issued the last couple of years has been, you know, not just the normal, uh, geo-tax application, and so, um, it's, it's skewed a little bit compared to these comparison cities. And then we also have current expenditures and then capital expenditures, so you can see what are we spending on just our operating needs, and then for our capital needs on a, a kind of a per resident basis, gives an interesting look at, at that. We have our contact information here as well, um, we would love to hear from you if you have any questions, and I would love to take any questions that you have right now.
Any questions for Bonnie?
Debt service expenditures as a percent of total expenditures? There's nothing for twenty-three and twenty-four?
Oh, yeah, thank you for mentioning that, we don't have some of the peer group information yet, so, um, the state auditor gives us all the data for all of the rest of the cities, and, um, we're always a couple years behind them, and so they're just kind of getting twenty twenty-three wrapped up, so we'll have that information next, and so, uh, we, we only have the twenty-one and twenty-two information.
Alright, and then on that graph specifically, I just wanna understand it better. Debt service expenditures as a percent of total expenditures, so it went way down in twenty-two and hasn't gone up a whole lot, it's kind of leveled out, there are twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yes. Yeah.
The capital expenditure per capita on the next page has gone up.
Yeah, we have, so, um, so for the debt service expenditures in twenty twenty-one, there was a, a refunding of one of the, of the prior bonds that was issued, and so when that happens, you, um, you had a lot more, uh, debt service costs than, um, than what you would have in a normal year, so twenty twenty-one is kind of skewed for that, that refunding that was completed, and so you issued a bond to to pay another one off and, and get a better interest rate in twenty twenty-one. And so you, you had more debt service than, than what you would normally experience. And then capital expenditures, that includes a lot of the Dupuy Avenue project, a ton of the, um, of the highway two twelve costs and, and some of those other capital costs that have been higher in the last few years. What this doesn't show you is a lot of those, how those costs have been funded with different grant opportunities, um, that the city has received.
So in the line, in the debt service expenditure as a percent of total expenditures, the line graph, the city of Olivia, is that accurate for twenty-three and twenty-four?
Yep, that should be accurate for twenty-three and twenty-four, the seven point nine and six point eight seven, so this is a little bit more normal. The twenty-five percent, um, was a little bit higher than what you normally experience.
Alright, so this is telling story, we're spending a lot per person, but not so much on just debt service.
Yep, that is, that is a good summary of that, yes, it's a really good correlation between those two, between those two charts. And you want this to be a little bit, you know, there's different theories on it, but ideally, you wanna spend your money on supporting current services instead of, you know, repaying that debt which has interest associated, right, so, yes.
Right, I just wanted to make sure I understood that clearly.
Yeah, then nope, that's, that was really great. Yeah, then nope, those, that was a really great clarification, thank you.
Anybody else have, uh, questions for Bonnie? Anybody have questions for Sean?
Do you need nine more people to help you?
Sean has done a great job through this whole process.
Yes.
Bonnie, we, uh, we really appreciate you, uh, walking us through the audit and, and, uh. And we will definitely take your findings seriously and, uh, and I'll always appreciate the partnership with that though.
Yes, are perfect, well, thank you so much for your time, we really appreciate working with the city and everybody have a great rest of your night, thank you.
You as well.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, some conversation regarding resolution fifty seven. Amending the twenty twenty three comp plan that was approved in April fifteenth of twenty twenty four for Olivia.
So this amendment is intended to incorporate the updated zoning and land use materials related to the Olivia Regional Airport. And ensure consistency with the recent ordinance changes that were adopted by the Olivia Joint Airport Zoning Board. So the Olivia Joint Airport Zoning Board, which has the very fun acronym as the J A S B. Um, adopted and updated zoning ordinance on February sixth, twenty twenty five, so this replaced the nineteen seventy eight. Olivia Airport zoning ordinance, and it establishes updated safety zones, land use controls and height restrictions. So it also references a new zoning map and the supporting documents. Um, so the planning commission wanted to recommend to the council this amendment to amend the comprehensive plan to include the airport exhibits. Um, the exhibit A, which is the airport zoning map, the, and exhibit B, the airport layout plan. It updates the future land use map in the comprehensive plan to reflect the map that was adopted as part of the airport zoning ordinance. Um, and it ensures that the comprehensive plan reflects all previously adopted materials and it's aligned with the new airport zoning ordinance. And next council meeting, you're gonna get to adopt it into our city code to make sure all of our. Documents that are supposed to be guiding our decisions are updated with this new information.
Thank you, Elizabeth, yeah, so staff and, uh, and also. The planning commission take the comprehensive plan very seriously as they should, and. And any alterations that we make to any zoning maps or, or any, any planning ordinances that, uh. That, what we enact here, we want reflected in all these documents, just so they're consistent across the, the whole works, cause. Tomorrow, us four may be replaced by a new council, so it's good to have all this stuff. Written in stone, so that's basically what this is all about. So I'll call for a motion to approve resolution fifty seven.
So move.
Second.
Got a mo-, um, motion made by Bum Gardner, seconded by Ferguson to approve resolution fifty seven, any discussion? Hearing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, uh, resolution fifty seven passes.
Thank you.
And, uh, we'll move on to, um, some information regarding our request from the Chrysler.
Yeah, I just wanna let you all know, um, two weeks ago, we did receive a request from the Chrysler dealership following the recent hailstorm. Um, that impacted a number of their vehicles that are obviously parked in their outdoor open lot. Um, they reached out to the city seeking temporary space to conduct repair work on the damaged vehicles. They inquired about using one of the city owned sheds located just south of their property. Um, it was for a duration of one and a half months, um, they also mentioned that in the event that the southern sheds are unavailable. They indicated that they would seek to use the bay that our electrical department is being located in. Um, I reviewed the matter with our city attorney. We confirmed that, no, that is not available, we are leasing it, we have a written lease agreement that does not provide for the parameters to just be relocated temporarily. Um, uh, while we understand that the dealership situation and we would like to be helpful, unfortunately, we just don't have the space to accommodate right now. We are undergoing our own renovation projects on these sheds and we're trying to stick to a pretty tight construction schedule. And so unfortunately, at this time, we are unable to offer any space, but we wanted to let you all know that the discussion was had. Um, just to keep everybody updated to the matters.
Well, thank you for advocating for the people of Olivia. Alright, we'll move down to the report section here, what do we have for reports from staff today?
I have a number of them, so apologies for hearing me talking for a couple items. Um, our first week at the Armory was a success, we sold twenty two passes, three of those were punch cards. Um, so we had twenty four people throughout last week come into the Armory, they were in the six to eighteen range and nineteen to fifty nine range. So we haven't quite hit our senior group that we're trying to hit. We do have ads about the Armory in the shopper as well to try and reach them, they'll be running for three weeks. Um, the American Public Power Association Conference that myself and utility accounts coordinator Jody went to the last week. Was very successful, we attended sessions on where are electric vehicles headed now? And the future of wind and solar, specifically for Councilwoman Bum Gardner. Uh, we also attended sessions on preparing public power for the future, building community trust for greater impact. And improving leadership to drive a culture of safety and commitment. And, um, persuasion power, inspiring agreement and achieving success, and my favorite one was having employees lead to happy customers. Um, so a really worthwhile conference, very excited to attend. Um, we also, um, an update on your nuisance process, so we have tracked, uh, forty three nuisances so far this year. Um, so we've been working on refining our process with both city hall and the police department, so everybody's. Working together and we are seeing some noticeable improvement, which is very exciting. Um, you did receive a memo in your packets about chickens. Um, this matter was reviewed at the planning commission this last week. Um, they looked at the issue, um, following discussion, the planning commission voted four to one to not recommend pursuing action to amend the zoning ordinance. In either the R one or R two, they cited kind of the three primary reasons. Inconsistency with zoning priorities and the comprehensive plan. Um, administrative costs and burden and community priorities, so there's a full memo in your packets where you can read a more intel. In-depth discussion about that. Um, the other things I wanna mention is next week, um, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I believe I will be at the League of Minnesota Cities City Fest in Duluth with Councilman Howard. Um, so we'll be representing the league, Olivia with the league there, which is very exciting. And then if you all could mark your calendars, we're tentatively planning on our budget work session to be held on Thursday, August twenty first. We're trying to get it on your calendar as well in advance.
We wrote term.
Um, it'll probably be in the east at five thirty until we run out of steam.
Oh yeah, we had to do a double header on that one.
You will be out of town, so what, when in August are you not out of town?
So don't.
Any night before that week, okay.
Any night in that week prior to, I'm, I'm actually leaving that morning.
I'll be out of town, I'll be in California, yeah, the first full week of August, I am.
I mean, would.
Can we do Tuesday about?
Yeah, could we, so you have a council meeting that Monday, would you prefer the budget work session on the following night?
The fourth, the fourth, I'll make it in, I'll leave.
No, I'm talking about August nineteenth. Would August nineteenth or twentieth work?
Oh, I'll be here, yeah. I'm just saying, if you're looking at other days, I can't do. I thought, I'd say maybe five, six, seven, eight, nines and eleven.
So nineteenth or twentieth?
The twentieth would be good.
Is Wednesday night the twentieth work for others?
Sure.
That's the Chamber of Commerce golf tournament, if we have previously had a city presence there. But we can do the budget work session that evening, that works.
I think the golf tournaments, I mean.
We can go just at the beginning, we don't have to be there for the whole event, we can just go and say hi. It's fine.
But we wanna support that, no?
We do wanna support that, so that usually starts in the afternoon and then it has a dinner event tagged to the end. Um, so we have had a city presence the last two years, um.
You'd probably be able to do the full golf, just won't be able to attend.
Yeah, to attend the.
The dinner.
The dinner portion.
So when do we wanna push back to the nineteenth?
How do people feel about the nineteenth, that Tuesday, you'd have a council meeting that Monday, and then you'd be right back here the following day. How much do you like each other?
It is all open for me at the moment, I just can't promise what may happen.
Do we wanna currently tentatively plan on the nineteenth?
There's no way you're gonna miss a budget meeting.
I might want to.
Might want him.
I'm kidding, I don't.
Perhaps you wanna ask me when I'm gone.
The barbers might be very excited though, uh, so, okay, tentatively, let's plan then, if people could mark their calendars and hold Tuesday. Um, August nineteenth for that work session. We're trying, we're trying to give you lots of time, thank you.
When you're saying that one at.
We typically start at five thirty.
They'll be here.
That'll be. And go for a while, so Jasmine will get your dinner orders on the eighteenth, the night before. And we'll get comfortable. Maybe we'll all need the comfy office chairs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, I'm done talking, okay.
No, I'm done, any other reports from staff?
Anything you two wanna add, anything chief wants to add?
How's the new digs, chief?
Wonderful.
Alright.
Yeah, still in the process of moving in, little by little, but definitely organized enough to work out of it.
Excellent, we appreciate you guys moving in here, I think, uh, it's always good to have, have done. Have you announced, so.
Yeah, all under one roof. Um, is it, is it our turn to talk?
Yes.
I just have a suggestion, uh, for the Armory to help. People know that it's open, if, you know, those little flags you can stick on the ground that.
Yeah.
You often see out in front of barbers or something like that.
Yeah.
It might be worthwhile, I think they're.
Yeah.
Hundred twenty bucks or something, uh, just for the local.
We have a little cardboard sign, but yes, it's not as dynamic as a big flag.
It's just a thought, because I don't know how many people actually know that it's open and when.
Yeah.
And so just, the flag is, catches the eye, a suggestion.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into it, um, so far what we've done is obviously we've put it out on social media, we've talked to various community partners about the hours. Um, the last Frenrell Register had an article about the Armory being open for the summer, and then we have an ad in the shopper as well, so we are trying to kind of. Do a wide gambit, maybe different audience types, but I think something visual like that.
Yeah.
Um, is certainly what we're looking to, yeah.
I mean, we're after the logos and the logos tend to go through the stoplights every day, so.
That's true, yeah, we do have planned for.
They don't even stop, they just.
You know, the boys are pretty busy out there today.
Yeah, we do have, um, planned during Corn Capital Week, um, Thursday of Corn Capital Week, we will have an open house for city hall. For residents to come through, and then the Friday of Corn Capital Week, we will have an open house for the Armory as well. So we are hosting two major community events that will be part of the Corn Capital Day event poster materials that advertise those items, so. But anything you guys can do word of mouth also helps a lot, so let your groups know it's open.
And the other reports from, uh, council?
If they make flyers, oh, send some up, the businesses, great, if that's.
We can do that too, yeah.
We did not have a, um, P U C changing, so something to report there.
Elizabeth already expressed what happened at the planning commission meeting, so, I know, I, I, I will say that, that the one. One dissenting vote did express that, uh, you know, she hopes that people come forward, you know. Uh, with this chicken issue and, and, uh, on that, in that grain or whatever you wanna say. Uh, always welcome people to come to public forum and, and talk chickens, if, uh, that's how you want to, you know. That's, it's a, it's a good way to address council and, and you can see that we had. Put the, the gears in motion to, to consider changing, you know, um, with, uh, with the last public forum that came in. So, um, if you, if you wanna talk chickens, you can keep coming to the public forum and we can, we can hear you talk chickens and, and perhaps. That's how things happen, so.
What is our current animal, do we have an animal nuisance person for the community or the city?
Our animal officer?
Like, no, not, do we have somebody for the city that would or does trap?
No.
Nuisance animals or.
Like, you're talking about like wild animals.
Well, that and or a thousand feral cats.
We do not current, we, we have, you know, if there is a dog at large or something like that. Uh, but we do not have anybody on city staff who particularly is going to trap. Badgers, feral cats, foxes, beavers, men, we don't, we don't have that expertise on staff, no.
All those things have happened last year.
I was naming real things, yes.
So, Holly, I, I get what you're saying, there are a ton of feral cats in this town and I. It's not an election year, so I can say this, I hate cats, but. Check this out, right, we were at one of these county convenings, it's probably been a year now. And we were sitting there, you know, and you, you talk with, uh, with some of the peers that were, you know, do the same thing that we do here. And the guy from the town east of us in the county, and he says, what are you guys doing about? All the rats? And I said back a second, I thought, we don't have rats, we have cats, we don't have rats because we have cats. So.
The cats.
If we are gonna round up all the cats, which, you know, it was kind of a campaign promise of mine a few years back, but I never fulfilled it. Just understand that something's gonna replace.
And I agree with that, but we have a, I had a neighbor, a, a constituent in the community. Addressed an issue with, um. A, a particular neighbor of theirs that has a large volume of cats that may or may, may not be. Being taken care of the way that they should be, so when those cats are loose in the neighborhood. Now you are, you're having waste issues because these animals are sick. You're having, you know, the possibility of these animals making other animals in.
Yeah.
That general vicinity sick, and that was a concern.
True.
And.
Is it their cats, or are they just feeding random cats that aren't theirs?
There's a, there's.
There should be some sense of responsibility, your cat owner shouldn't really be outrunning around the neighborhood.
Well.
I mean, we do have an ordinance that says you need to pick up your own animals' waste, whether it's on private property, public property. Um, I mean, one of your, your easiest things to do, you know, don't feed the feral cats that stick around. Uh, there have been other cities that have implemented, and again, they're larger than us, so like, just know. But there have been other cities that have tried to implement with the appropriate staff and resources. A catch, neuter, spay and release program to at least quell the amount of new cats going on, um.
That's where the rats come in.
Um, so.
So if you're neutering, spaying them and letting them back out there, they're still eating.
So I'd rather release you, yeah.
But, um, so I mean, I have done a little bit of research into this issue. Um, again, we don't have any dedicated staff member who does this type of responsibility. Um, it's a, it's also just very difficult given our location, um, we are, we are a small community nestled around nature. So that's also hard because cats can come in from anywhere.
Well, and to step away from the cats just a little bit, what about our other wildlife that is encroaching? Into the city limits, i.e. skunks, raccoons, possums, whatnot like that, I mean, we've got some. Areas that I'm sure that the chief is aware of, um, that are, um. Very welcoming to these particular animals and, um. I know that we've got a citizen on the east end of town that has handled a few that have been on his property, but. At what? At what stage do we figure out, um. Actually hiring somebody to take care of the s- skunks, the possums, the raccoons that are running through the communities, I mean, the.
But we live in the.
The cats are a worry. We don't live in the country, we live in the city.
This is definitely a part of the country, the city's okay.
I'll take care of it, I'll take care of it.
But I think it's within city limits, but you can't stop wildlife. We have deer that sit at the railroad tracks, you know what I mean, we, there's like several houses. Several houses that you can go to in the middle of the night and see a bunch of deer sitting there, like, where do you stop, do you kill that deer too or? You know what I mean, I just think that's that's a lot to put on, who's gonna, like, who would do that, like, we just bring somebody in to do that, I.
If if we move to do something about this, I I think it should be, put it up for volunteer, when people need community service, the kids need community service hours and stuff, I mean, that might be a way to. To go about it, I don't like the idea of hiring a professional primarily because this is the first time hearing about it, I haven't heard anyone else complain to me, like, it's a big enough issue to put money towards. Um so that's where if if maybe we can have some people volunteer, they care about it a lot, and we'll have to.
We have, if it if it has become, it, the instances where it has become an issue, so. Last year, we had beavers damming up one of our stormwater systems, which was inhibiting the flow. The city hired a professional trapper to rectify the issue. Um so that's one of the services, you know, we contract out for an audit for specialized services, so. I would say that if there are items that are becoming a huge issue, again, they're harming city infrastructure issues. Um we we reach out to the professionals to resolve the issue, um. I I would echo the sentiments of Councilman Baumgartner in that and Councilwoman Person that like. We we do live very adjacent to wildlife, so where do you draw the line there about which wildlife you trap and which you don't? Um as well as it it's a, it's a, it it is an issue, there are skunks and other things here. Uh is it to the level of hiring or trying to add a staff member to handle it, I don't think so. I would be hesitant to authorize volunteers to dispose of wildlife, I feel like that's probably a public safety issue. Um our lawyers might voice in about kids trying to trap animals, I don't know what liability that might open us up to, um. But I mean, if it's on somebody's private property and they would like to get rid of it, they can hire somebody privately to do so.
The majority of the cats in town that I've seen are in the trailer park, um living under houses, under trails and inside trailers. Um that are boarded up still, all that, that's that side, south of town or south of two twelve, I, the majority of cats I see are pets. That are out and they go back in periodically, so they're not homeless, but.
Can we put something on the electrical bill that makes sure your cats stay indoors, I mean, you're not really supposed to.
We don't have a leash law in town.
We do not.
Yes.
Can we make?
We don't have a leash law for dogs either.
Really?
I thought your dog either had to be on a leash or be able to be recalled, yeah, under control.
I, yeah, it doesn't specifically say.
On a leash.
On a leash.
But they can't be out running around like.
I tried to read that a little bit, um not too long ago too, because it wasn't really clear out of order.
Yeah.
Um because I had someone talk to about working my dog in the park, and it was on a leash, and I'm like, well, yeah, it makes sense, why wouldn't you? And they said, well, somebody told me you can't, well, what we have on paper isn't real clear when it comes to on a leash or not, or in control. I couldn't amend it, so we handle that case by case.
Yeah, I had eleven people come up to me and ask me why we can't hatch chickens, I had zero ask me about skunks. So it's, I'm not hearing.
Oh, that was good, that was the.
And and.
So you had different people asking you different questions and.
Right, yeah, no, I'm just saying, no, I'm just reporting that I haven't heard that, on my end, nobody's talked to me about that, I'm just. You're giving your report on the situation, I'm giving mine.
No, I had a constituent ask to pay, so I told them that I would bring them up.
Okay, any other reports from council? Alright, well, any any notices and communications?
June nineteenth, Happy Gilmore at Dernix Park starts at sunset, so come on out and enjoy the first outdoor movie of the season.
How many are you planning to do?
Uh we are planning to partner these with our third Thursday Main Street, like Farmer's Market. From June through September and then end the season within October on a Saturday trunk or treat. Like we did last year where we did the trunk or treat and then we followed it up with a family-friendly, it's not Halloween this year, it's just a fall movie, so. We're excited.
Sounds good. What's a fall movie?
It'd be Coco. Looks like Halloween.
You think Walmart. Alright.
And luckily, we have a nice rain location at the Armory.
Well, with uh with no other items on the agenda, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Okay, motion's been made by Howard, seconded by Baumgartner to adjourn, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you, everybody, we are adjourned.